Very good evening. Today is Monday, September 22, 2014. It's my honor to call the regular meeting of the City of Burnsville Planning Commission to order. Welcome, Commissioners.
Welcome, Chair.
Deb, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome to the listening and viewing audience. I'm glad you have tuned us in. The agenda for today's meeting is as follows. Item one, adoption of agenda. Item two, approval of the minutes of August 25, 2014 meeting. Item three, public hearing to approve an application for Discount Home Furniture for a conditional use permit for a furniture showroom and outdoor storage at 3100 Highway 13 West. Item four, a public hearing ordinance amending Title 10 zoning ordinance of the Burnsville City Code addressing commercial kennels in the B3 General Business District, B4 Highway Commercial District, and GIH Gateway Industrial Heavy District. Item five, updates and adjournment. Commissioners, let's go to item one of the agenda, adoption of the agenda. Any changes?
None from me, Chair.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bradrick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, pass on a 4-5-0 vote. Item two, approval of the minutes from the August 25, 2014 regular commission meeting. Any changes?
None. None from me, Chair.
None from staff.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benke.
Second.
Second it could Commissioner Taheri. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All against, pass on a 5-0 vote. Okay, first, next item on the agenda is a public hearing to approve an application for Discount Home Furniture for a conditional use permit for a furniture showroom and outdoor storage at 3100 Highway 13 West. And presenting is Ms. Deb Garrus. Welcome, Deb.
Thank you, members of the Commission. This evening, we have an application for conditional use permit, and this is a site that many of the Commissioners will be familiar with. We are looking at an application by Discount Home Furniture, which is located in the Fairchild Building, Fairchild Equipment Building, at 3100 Highway 13 West. Discount Home Furniture is actually already located within that multi-tenant building. In addition, there is another business as well, Granite City, which is also located in that building. They have located in the building without getting the proper zoning approvals and building permit approvals. So staff has been working with the applicant, and they have brought forward their conditional use permit, which is needed for two things. Discount Home Furniture is considered to be a furniture showroom in the Gateway Industrial Heavy zoning district, so that needs a conditional use permit. And for the granite business, outdoor storage of the granite and the racking systems, any outdoor storage does also require conditional use permit. So that is the application before the Commission this evening. The subject site, as indicated, is located on Washburn Avenue and Highway 13 West. All of the properties adjacent are also zoned Gateway Industrial Heavy, and the Menards Building to the east is also a planned unit development, as this particular site is also a planned unit development. On the overhead above, the site that is the part of the building that's the furthest to the east is where both the furniture store and the Granite City business are proposed to be located. They're looking to convert existing tenant space in all interior remodeling. There's no exterior changes that are proposed to the site, aside from what is already existing. On the overhead, this shows you, there are currently banner signs out for Granite City and Discount Home Furniture. The reason for these signs do not necessarily comply with the ordinance. However, because of the construction of County Road 5 and Highway 13, the City Council suspended enforcement of the sign ordinance in the area for those businesses. That's something that is fairly standard for the, for the City Council to do, just because of these big, you have these big road projects, and getting to businesses is somewhat difficult. What's important to note, and we have advised the applicant accordingly, is that when the 13 and 5 project is completed later this fall, all of the property owners within the Minnesota River Quadrant area, both north and south of Highway 13, basically between the Savage City border and the 13 and 5 interchange, will be notified that the ordinance will again be effective, if you will, and staff will be working to meet those, make sure that the ordinance is followed for those properties. But just wanted to show you that they're already existing, so you know that. Also on the screen, you can see north, the northeast corner of the building, that's where the granite is currently being stored outdoors. This is a fenced area that was approved back, actually with Menards years ago, for outdoor storage. More recently, in 2012, when Fairchild Equipment took over the site, the outdoor storage approved for the planned unit development includes buses that are part of a bus company that is located within the building, and also equipment for Gary Fairchild's operation is located outside as well. So this would be the third item for the outdoor storage, and we're looking at some location standards as part of the conditional use permit for the granite storage. The site plan that is before you is pretty much what exists out there, it's pretty much what was submitted as part of the Fairchild application. It does show the outdoor storage area on the northeast part of the building, behind the fenced area. It also shows that there are currently existing exit and entry doors out there, and there's also an existing overhead door for the granite facility. The floor plan shows how the, how the area is to be divided. The entire tenant space is about 12,800 square feet, and again, what is being proposed are two different tenants, if you will, in this space. The Granite City operation will take place in the northeast corner of the building, and then there will also be an interior storage area used for both. And then the furniture sales, furniture showroom, will occupy the rest of the building, except for the very western part of the tenant space, and that will be an office area. To access Granite City, people would go through the main doors to the south, walk through the furniture sales operation to get back there. Generally, the type of operation for Granite City is that they fabricate there at that site, so they get their granite delivered, it'll be delivered to the back of the building within that fenced area. Then they do the fabrication process, and then they usually take the, whatever is fabricated to the customer site. So that is generally how that works. For the Discount Furniture Showroom, that, again, is something that's been in operation. What they have basically done is, they have sales there, and they are just currently, and they propose to use the front entry on the south side of the building for customer pickup areas. We have our fire marshal that still needs to complete his review of the pickup location. The area is, oh, excuse me, on the, on the site, the proposed granite area is at the northeast side of the building. In this, east is to the top of the structure. You can see, though, in the parking lot, that in front of this building, there is an indentation in the driveway, and it may well be, I believe that there's a 34-foot drive lane between the curb and the parking islands, and it may well be that they can utilize that entrance for customer pickup, but the fire marshal still needs to make a determination on that. So we have included a condition that those pickup areas do need to be approved by the fire marshal and according to the building code. In terms of the proposed granite storage, right now, they are located in two of the parking stalls that were striped on the rear of the building. Those stalls, obviously, if they're used for granite, can't be counted any longer for parking. The number of parking spaces on the site will be reduced if we allow this outdoor storage area to 233, I believe, 233 or 232 spaces. It is still in conformance with the ordinance. They still have a couple of extra spaces per the ordinance requirements, so staff does not have an issue with utilizing that area for storage. We are suggesting, and have added a condition to specifically identify, that there is a maximum storage area of 25 by 30 feet for the granite to be stored, and then the racking systems. We also have a condition that nothing else will be stored outside, with the exception of that granite and the racking systems themselves. This slide, again, now to the top is west, and it gives you a little bit clearer image of where the customer pickup is proposed, to be at that main entrance to the facility. In addition, you can also see where the granite is being stored outside, and those are those two parking spaces. We have also recommended a condition that the exterior storage not be taller than eight feet. That would be the limit of the fence, is currently eight feet, and just to keep, kind of keep control of what is actually stored out there. The operator of Granite City has moved from a different building to this site, and we just want to make sure that there are no issues with other types of materials being stored outside, or that migrating into a bigger space than, than needs to be. In addition, the, they are proposing to have an outdoor bin area for their trash that would be located on the north side of the granite facility. There are other outdoor bins as well in back, but they are all screened in this area by existing buildings. Even though the fence that is there is chain link, you've got the existing Menards right next door, which is totally, everything is screened from that building. So no one from the public generally can see any of the storage materials that are in this area. We have, again, specified as a recommended condition that the, any exterior use of the area for storage of recyclables and those types of things cannot be done, those need to be stored inside, or they need to be within the bin. No additional storage other than the granite and the racking systems is proposed. In terms of the signage, as we'd indicated, the current signage that is out there currently does not meet the ordinance. We have talked to the applicant, and they will be submitting a sign permit and meet the sign ordinance for the exterior signage for those two businesses. We've added that as a condition as well. When we have been to the site, there are some items that have been sitting outside on the east side of the building. I believe there's an old television set there, an old chair, some other debris. We have recommended in the conditions that the site be cleaned up and remain free of those types of debris, and that that be taken care of within 30 days of the date the CUP would be approved. The other item that we have indicated as well is, I believe I stated at the beginning, there have been, there has been construction inside of the tenant space. What has happened is the owner of the Granite City operation actually sublet to the furniture store, and they, the granite facility, they installed some walls and did some construction without building permits there. The fire marshal and the building official are working with them, they've identified what needs to be done to bring the interior space into compliance. The good thing about this is that when the other parts of the building were remodeled recently, between 2012 and now, they did bring fire suppression to this tenant space, so at least that is there, and will not be a significant factor for them to, to extend that to where it's needed within this space. Similar to the other standards, we are recommending a condition that the building be brought into compliance with the fire code and building code, again, within 30 days of approval of the conditional use permit application. With that, staff has recommended eight conditions that are identified in the staff report, and I'll not read those off, but I'm available, obviously, for questions. What we do want to make sure of is that we did look at the site. Furniture sales itself and outdoor storage are uses that can be accommodated at the site. They should not have any negative impacts to any of the adjacent properties. The traffic generated is very low for both of these uses, but we do believe that the conditions that we've identified are necessary to make sure that this is a good operation, both for the building owner and for the city. With that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garrus. Commissioners, questions for Ms. Garrus on your presentation?
Deb, I, Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bradrick.
Deb, it's been, this is probably the biggest list we've had since I've been on the Commission, where we've got several things that have to happen within 30 days of the approval. So can, I want to talk about that just a little bit, just so I understand. Can I ask a question of the, the condition about the existing debris, the furniture?
Yes.
Why is that, why are we handling that through a condition and give them 30 days versus the standard process we've been going through with the city lately and through assessments?
That's something that could be done with assessments. The applicant has not been so forthright in resolving these issues. We had wanted to see the building code violations dealt with and handled before this ever came to planning commission and council. That has not occurred. Also, the, the items that are outside, that has not been cleaned up. So what we're doing is, we believe that the uses make sense for the site, and don't see a need to deny the CUP application, but we do want to reiterate and give them a specific timeframe to meet, otherwise, they would need to come back before the planning commission and, and talk to you and council as to why they would not be able to complete these items. From a staff perspective, they're, they're very manageable to be able to complete in probably a week or two timeframe at the most.
So can I clarify?
Go ahead.
So if, that's what I was, my question about the 30 days, so let's say within 30 days, they don't complete number six and number eight. What is the next step? They have to come back to staff and then back to planning commission, because that makes the conditional use permit that we voted for this evening no longer?
We would bring it back to you. Basically, the conditional use permit is not valid until all of the conditions are met. So if they are unable to or unwilling to meet these conditions, then we don't have a conditional use permit just sitting out there, and other problems. We have tried and are continuing to try to get the applicants to address the outstanding building code violations and some of these other things. The problem has been, in my opinion, that the ones that created the issues are associated with the granite operation, and the individual that is working for the furniture showroom is the one who has hired the architect to provide the plans that we needed and the building code analysis that was needed by the building official. And so he is really trying very hard to comply. The other individual is not, and so we're trying to do something here that will, you know, that makes sense, but yet, get the action that we need to see actually just completed and done.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradrick. Any other, Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to clarify for the record, Mr. Fairchild owns a property.
Yes.
You said Granite City, or Granite, whatever they are, sublet to the furniture retailer?
Yes.
And then the furniture retailer made the application?
Yes.
Is everybody okay with that? Where does Mr. Fairchild stand on, on this whole process?
Mr. Fairchild has not been involved or wanted to be involved. Again, it's the furniture store individual who has invested and has his business and needs this to go through, so we have tried to assist him. Quite frankly, if the building owner would take care of their own tenants, none of this would be an issue for the city. But he has not. As I understand it, the, at least one of the tenants has not paid their rent, but again, Mr. Fairchild has not acted. So from a staff perspective, we are trying to help the furniture salesman to the extent that we can, and make this a workable situation for all parties. It's the worst of the worst.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas.
In terms of...
Commissioner Benke?
Ms. Garrus, so we are working with the furniture guy.
Yes.
The granite guy needs to do his thing before the furniture guy can continue his business in essence.
They all, yes, yes.
I guess, a couple of questions about the, the items again. When I first read this, I thought that there was a 750-square-foot completely fenced area for the granite to keep it contained, and now it appears that it's just a space within a larger fenced yard.
Correct. The, there is not a separate fenced area for the granite, that's correct. It's within the larger, larger storage area that is already fenced.
So monitoring their use of that storage area becomes a task for staff?
Yes.
Um...
But it does also carry with it, generally, if the conditions are not being followed, our practice has been to send it back, bring it back to planning commission and council, and it can be taken away, and then they have no, no land use clearance, if you will, and can't operate.
But now we're back to the furniture business as being beholden to the granite business.
Yes.
And of course, that was his choice for taking the sublease.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. Any other comments and questions? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Garrus. This application requires a public hearing. I now open the public hearing. Anyone who would desire to come up and address the planning commission on this matter can do so. Seeing no one, I close the public hearing, and back to you Commissioners.
Chair, I would like to make one statement. I guess I'd like to be known for the record that we, we would like to invite the applicant up and speak with us, but at this point, we, we have no one...
up and speak with us, but at this point, we, we have no one in front of the body.
I was just about to comment on that. So, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to make sure that was for the record, that we don't have, there is no applicant in front of us this evening to, to speak on their behalf.
Okay. You know, commissioners, it beats me to understand why an applicant will not show up to answer questions and to get a fair hearing on their application. The city is a business-friendly city. Staff works very hard to get the application on the agenda. I know the applicant is not here to answer questions. I, you know, sometime, even though we work so hard to get applications done on a timely manner, it's difficult to understand why people don't show up. I, I don't understand that. Any other comments, Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to go back to this PUD and conditional use permit. We have an owner, landowner, a tenant, and a sublease that's made the application. If we approve this, and they do not perform as stated in the recommendations, does that only affect the granite operation and the furniture store, or the whole PUD operation?
It only affects the furniture store and the granite operation. The granite operation can be there. What they cannot have without the conditional use permit is the outdoor storage.
So the balance of tenants in that area...
Would not be affected.
Would not be affected. That, that part of the PUD would not be in, in jeopardy.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner DeHerry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the proposed space for the granite fabrication is roughly about 4,000 or 5,000 square feet.
Yes.
Are, is granite fabrication going to share some of the administrative use spaces with the furniture store? Because I basically see an open storage.
Right.
With a couple of doors here.
Yes.
So are they planning to join some kind of operation as far as the administration's public use?
They've not indicated such. Really, there are only two employees for the furniture sales operation, the applicant and his son. And as far as the granite fabrication, I believe there are only two people that are working on that as well. I don't believe that they perceive a need for the office area, but it has been designed such that, again, they indicated an open floor plan, so if somebody does want to come in from the public to the granite facility, they come in through the, through the open showroom area. And the bathrooms are available for the public and for all of the employees within the entire tenant space.
Is that some type of agreement, or contractual agreement, or something written?
No, it's just the way that, that they have designed the space for, in the building code.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there is no other discussion, do I hear a motion on this matter?
Chair, I, can I make another comment?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I, I always take staff's recommendations very seriously, and sometimes I, I do like to have a conversation with the applicants and understand if, if they agree or disagree with any of the conditions. So I would have to say that I'm, in, in most cases, I would, I would usually vote with the staff, staff's recommendation for approval due to the fact that they believe this is the best way to handle this somewhat delicate situation. So I guess I would say that I, I could vote in favor for this, but I, I really, I'm struggling with that. There's a lot of pieces here that I believe are very difficult. As Ms. Garris explained, I was trying to understand the process of what's next. Today, they're a non-conforming business, and if they don't meet these 30-day guidelines and two or three of these conditions, they're still going to be non-conforming.
Actually, they're illegal.
Illegal, okay.
Yes.
That's probably different. We've dealt with non-conforming, I guess, in the past, but illegal. So then the, the next step is for the city to take some sort of legal action to shut the business down at, at some point?
Yes.
Am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
So I'm reluctant, extremely reluctant, but I guess to, as we continue to move the, the meeting along, I would stand with staff in this recommendation. However, that's, that's frustrating for me.
I agree.
That's my, my piece.
I understand, and I share, I share your feeling on this matter. I mean, I am dismayed that no one is here to answer questions, because there are so many 30-day things that they have to meet. I don't know if they can. And our recommending this application to the city council, if I, if we do it, I'm not too happy about it, really. But I wait to hear my motion so that we can vote on it.
Sure.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Ms. Garris, some clarification, I think, again. The building code violations are limited to the furniture portion, or the granite portion, or both?
Both.
Both. The signs affect both.
Correct.
The debris, that actually could go back to Mr. Fairchild, for that matter, since he owns the building and it's outside. Customer pickup items alone. I mean, granite, so outside of the building codes, if granite moved inside, they really have no other significant issue.
Correct.
They could bring the garbage inside, and they'd have no significant issue.
Correct, provided they met whatever applicable codes. That's correct.
Yeah, I struggle with the, the furniture company being in this position, definitely. And with that said, I too believe staff is doing what they can to work with that situation.
Commissioner Venky, just one clarification. The signs are not illegal at this time, because the city council has put a hold on...
On enforcement.
Implementation of...
That's correct. I apologize, yes.
Code or signs, so. Okay, where, where do we go? Commissioner Thomas?
I, I agree too.
I'm so happy to hear it.
Yeah, it's, it's a very difficult situation, but, you know, we've got two businesses down there. Let's give them a chance. And reluctantly, I guess, I would like to make a motion if we're ready.
Go right ahead.
So I would recommend that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the conditional use permit to allow a furniture showroom for discount furniture and outdoor storage of granite at 3100 Highway 13 West with the eight conditions as stated in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Motion to recommend to the city council from, by Commissioner Thomas? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, I think I heard Commissioner Bradrick first. Seconded by Commissioner Bradrick. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay.
I was just going to add, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I, in my opinion, this is very simple operation. It's basically the open storage room, and if the owner can comply with all the requirements and conditions, I don't see a major issue to block or to object to this. So with condition of owner follow, all the recommendation, I vote my, for this.
Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passed on a five-zero vote, and this will go to the city council next Tuesday? Is it?
Actually, no. There is an extra week. I believe it goes October 7th. There's an extra Monday in the month of September, so October 7th.
This will go to the city council, their regular meeting, on October 7th, 2014. Thank you, Ms. Garris.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing, ordinance amending Title 10 zoning ordinance of the City of Burnsville City Code addressing commercial kennels in the B3 General Business District, B4 Highway Commercial District, and Gih Gateway Industrial Heavy District. Ms. Garris?
Thank you, members of the commission. This, this item actually contains two parts. One part, in terms of the zoning ordinance, the planning commission is required to hold a public hearing anytime there is a change to that. The change that we're looking at is very simple. It's basically to add commercial to our current definition of kennel, and also then to add, or excuse me, to add commercial kennel, which is actually currently defined in the zoning ordinance, but to add this as a use to the three zoning districts as identified in the staff report in the attachment. What happened with this is the zoning ordinance, as you know, we have done several amendments to, and it has been, it's been a time-sensitive issue with the codifiers being able to incorporate all of those various changes, especially the huge housekeeping changes that we made earlier this year. So when staff came later to do, to deal with this kennel situation, actually, the first ordinance had not been codified yet. So in the interim of those things actually happening, the codifier did catch this. It was intended that these three zoning districts also contain the kennel slash commercial use. So that is what is before you this evening. The other part, the city council does not have to hold public hearings on, as far as city code amendments are concerned. The other part of this is a part of the city code, a different part than the zoning ordinance, where they just need to make some modifications, again, to commercial kennel provisions, which, again, thought we had done, but actually, just the way that the ordinances were written and with the timing, didn't occur. So this is a public hearing. The, a public hearing is on the zoning or Title 10, part of the application.
Thank you, Ms. Garris. Any questions, commissioners? This is a very simple house cleaning, really, matter.
I agree, Chair.
This application requires a public hearing. I now open the public hearing on this matter. Anyone who so desire to come and address the planning commission on this matter can do so now. Seeing no one, I close the public hearing on this matter. Commissioners, any other discussion? Okay, if there's none, I, this is a simple house cleaning matter, as Ms. Garris has explained. Just to add the word "commercial" in front of kennel. Do I hear a motion? So moved by Commissioner Bradrick?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Venky. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Passed on a five-zero vote, and...
Thank you.
This will also go probably to the planning, to the city council on the 7th of October.
Correct.
Okay. Item five, commissioners, update. Any update, Ms. Garris, from staff?
The only item that we have is, we believe that we will be canceling the first meeting in October, depending on how things come together. If we're able to get some information together on some of the planning commission work items, work plan items, we may have a work session, but most likely anticipate we probably will just cancel the meeting.
Maybe on the 13th?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's possible that the regular meeting of the planning commission, the 13th of October, will be canceled?
Yes.
Okay. But you will let us know?
We will definitely let you know, yes.
Any updates from commissioners?
None.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A mission, moved by Commissioner Thomas?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Venky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passed on a five-zero vote. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Ms. Garris.
Thank you.
Thank you for those who have been watching the meeting, and those who will watch the meeting. We do appreciate your tuning us in. Have a good night, and take care.